All this we need to order. I stand. I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Secretary to note, roll call, Mick.
All members present, Dave Villa.
Zoom.
Yeah, Zoom.
Board correspondent, report, Pat.
Okay. So, a couple of things going on at the state level. Governor Evers signed a bill into law about school safety. It allows the critical incident mapping data to be submitted in lieu of blueprints of your school. And that would mean like interior and exterior photos, floor plans, staging areas, hazardous materials, where your utilities shut off evacuation routes. So you don't have to have blueprints, you can submit this. He also vetoed, and we talked about it before, the bill that require each school to post on the internet their curriculum, their classes, their learning materials. And he vetoed that. And under that bill, if you didn't do that, you could sue the district and get up to fifteen thousand of your attorney's fees. He vetoed it because basically every parent has a right to request that information now if you want it. And the staff, I mean, that would be a full-time job. Most districts don't have the resources to hire on somebody for that purpose. They'd rather put them in the classroom.
They didn't fund it.
No, he vetoed the bill. He vetoed the bill.
Yeah.
Oh, well, this is unfunded mandate. Yes, of course it is.
Yeah.
And then it didn't pertain to independent charter schools or private schools that received vouchers from the state. So that was vetoed. Governor Evers also announced a hundred and ten million dollars in federal funds for school districts. Remember, we talked about that. We weren't quite sure if we were going to get that or not because they promised money before, but, you know, doesn't always come through. But this time they did. And it's a hundred and ten million dollars. It's going to be distributed per pupil. So for our district, that means ninety-four thousand nine hundred and forty dollars.
Are there restrictions on how we can spend that?
Not on this one. Not on this one. Okay. And then S R three funds have been released. Now, you remember, a couple of months ago, I said that the Wisconsin Joint Finance Committee wanted to take five percent of those funds and reward the schools that had predominantly stayed in in-person instruction. Well, the Department of Education is saying not so fast. You can't do that because these funds should be addressed for learning loss. And if your school was open, there should be no minimal, no more learning loss or very minimal learning loss. So now they've got to go back to the Joint Finance Committee. Maybe they have to change a few things. And then the other five percent should be released. I'm assuming with the S R three, the restrictions are like...
Twenty-six pages.
Twenty-six pages.
Six and a half pages.
This one I'm kind of really excited about. Now, we all know about special education funding. And when the idea was passed, you know, Individuals Disability Act, the federal government was going to pay forty percent of the extra cost for special education students with disabilities. And that never happened. And one reason why, well, currently they pay fifteen point seven, and they're going to pay forty. So that's quite a significant drip. The reason for that is because the number of students have increased dramatically, like twenty-five percent, but the funding has not. So a new bill has been introduced that would make it that they would commit to what they originally said. And they would do that over a ten-year period. Now, I know, I know. But it looks like it's got both, you know, bipartisan support in the House and the Senate. So maybe this time, I mean, it's been brought before. So maybe this time it's going to be a goal.
That would be great.
Still fall short of two-thirds.
Well, it's a start. It's a start.
But people also have to remember that, too.
Yes. Yes, I mean, currently, what are we, this is fifteen.
Twelve.
Twelve, yeah. So there we go.
That is some good news, though.
Yes, yeah, I don't get to do that very often.
Okay, any questions or comments? Keep going. Mick, CISA report.
Uh, CISA. They received a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for computer science. It's an ecosystem for youth on sequencing and coding. K-12, if anybody's interested, they can go to www.co Wisco.com. The National Convention, the CISA National Convention, we had a presence down there and set up the, really touted the redefining ready program that CISA has developed. There will be some recorded sessions for the state convention, not all, but some. And there is a, there was a lawsuit out there. The guy couldn't remember, Dave Bailey from Brilliant couldn't remember, it was Carston versus somebody. It was at the U.S. Supreme Court. And it was regarding funding of parochial schools. Have you heard about that at all?
Yes, it's at the Supreme Court level, no?
It's at the Supreme Court level, right?
Yeah, they're supposed to rule on it in June or July.
Okay, I thought, oh, here we go. And what would the ramifications of that be if they rule one way versus the other?
They could be pretty expensive. But it really has a lot, it really comes out of, I believe, Maine, Maine, I think is the state, where they're, it's sued as broad against them not allowing a parent to use that money. Because money is intended for them to get an education. And currently, students can go to elite, private, Ivy League kind of schools, and that's okay. But if a parent, something about religious or something tied to it, so. There was just a big...
A Christian.
I don't know how, I don't know that the Supreme Court is in much of a hurry to make a decision on that.
No.
Because I think the impacts are pretty far-reaching. And there are many, many, many affluent people that use that to their advantage. So I, to these schools, but...
And I spent my Saturday at the CISA seven office interviewing candidates for Jeff's position. We had seven applications, so it was a very slim pickings. We decided to interview four. One rescinded his application. He took a job, we're not sure, somewhere else. We only had three to choose from. We did narrow it down to two, not too hard when you only have three. And next Wednesday, we'll be looking to make a final decision. But I still want to sit down and chat with you, get some opinions here.
It's an interesting scenario. I said, that's an interesting scenario.
Very interesting scenario. Very. One gentleman was from Michigan. And he is an ESA, they don't call it CISA, they call it ESA Administrator. But they're, in Michigan, their Cisas are funded by the state. He's got a forty million dollar budget, so.
He doesn't want a couple of Wisconsin and raise money to the body of people?
Yeah, so anyway, yeah, I wanted to, you know, some time before next Wednesday, I appreciate that.
Okay, questions or comments for Mick? Okay, we will keep moving. Student representative report.
Okay, so sports. Girls' basketball is one in seven. Yeah, yeah. We've kind of had like a hard schedule so far, like non-conference games. But then, like, the upcoming week, tonight we have game. It's home against Green Bay East. And then Thursday, we also have a home game against Brilliant. And then boys' basketball is currently on a vacation, if you want to say. But they're one in seven. And then their next game will be December twenty-seventh at Peshtigo. And then musicals started on last week's Sunday, and the play is Cinderella.
What is it?
Cinderella.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, pretty exciting. And then, I know Ms. Horn's going to talk about this, but the student council is taking part of the Giving for Sarah Food and Hygiene Drive. We have two tables on each floor of the high school. And we ask students and staff to donate non-perishable food items and personal hygiene items. And then myself and Max Weinberg will be bringing it to the Kiwanee County Humane Society, or no, the department in Kiwanee and dropping it off there on Wednesday. And then Christmas spirit week, today was pajama day. Tuesday is team day. Wednesday is movie day. And then Thursday is ugly sweater day. And then lastly, the Christmas dinner was a success. That was the band concert dinner, or enquirer for the trip that's going on. It was a fundraiser. And it was very successful.
That is always very popular.
Yes.
Best thoughts? All right. Thank you, Julie.
Good afternoon.
Thanks.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item, I have no misconceptions or rumors to report. So that's another little Christmas present for the district. Public participation, did anyone sign in this week? All right. Board president announcements. Well, I guess I certainly would like to wish everybody, staff, students, and everyone in the community, a happy holiday season, happy, healthy new year. And let's all hope 2022 just keeps bringing good news to everybody. The other thing I wanted to, because I don't know that we have addressed it anywhere else, is the school board convention. Because that will be occurring before our next meeting. Oh.
Speak up, please.
You got the sign, Barb.
Wow. Nick got through, but I didn't this time. Okay, school board convention. I am hoping, I mean, I know most of us are not going. Did you two decide if you can get there to vote?
I think we'll go down on Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because since we finally have a resolution in there, it would be a shame not to be representing.
I'm thinking it shouldn't take long this time.
It's not a large group of resolutions. Yeah, but, yeah, well, wonderful.
So which reminds me, Courtney, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody saw the, if anybody has a strong feeling one way or the other, they should let me know. Otherwise, I'm just going to use my good judgment.
On all the resolutions?
On all, well, on ours, that's, yeah. Ours is a no-brainer. But on the rest of them, we'll just, okay, go ahead.
All right. Yeah. I expect, since our resolution applies to everybody, and mental health is a need everywhere. I would hope that we don't have any negative feelings about it.
Well, every district's in the same, in basically the same boat we are, so.
Exactly. Well, wonderful. I'm glad the two of you are making the effort to get down there. Thank you. Administrative reports. Start with you, Nick, Superintendent Business.
All right, hopefully I don't get a sign this time. Not loud enough, babe? I can see the smirk on his face, so I think I'm accomplishing that. So, just a reminder for school board candidates, notice of non-candidacy due twelve, twenty-four, twenty-one. Let's come up quickly. And then candidacy documents need to be filed by January fourth, twenty twenty-two. Pat took the thunder on the ninety-four thousand nine forty for the district.
I left a little bit for you.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think that one's kind of snuck past every school district in the state. Nobody was planning on that, so certainly helps us try and do some of the things that we're putting forward. But as you know, human capital right now is awfully difficult to come by. So you can have all the greatest plans in the world, but if you can't get people, it's really difficult to do. Our audit came back. Obviously, good things going on in our district. The things that I wanted to point out is our fund balance now forty-four percent. The reason why that's important to a school district is because, as everybody up here knows, that we navigate well over five months of our school year without a single dime of revenue. So if you don't have a fund balance, it's really difficult to run a school district. Ours is very good, so obviously, we have a strong financial position that allows us to not short-term borrow and all those things that other school districts have to do to keep the doors open, lights on, and teachers paid. So that's a good thing for our district. Obviously, there's a ton more information in that packet, but auditors do a good job, as always, with that. And lastly is S R stakeholder input. Put that out to the community. I got three responses, one from a community member and two from teachers. So again, really difficult, really difficult to navigate that when we get little to no input on how to do things. I understand that there's a twenty-six and a half page document. But part of those funds require stakeholder input. So we'll probably reissue that out to the community so that we can encourage other people to take a look at those twenty-six and a half pages. And maybe they have much better ideas than we have. But they should also understand that this is probably, I would say, one of the most difficult times in education to acquire the people that we need in order to be successful. We are in a very difficult position. And I would say, education as a whole. All you have to do is just look at what's happening in surrounding communities. You have major school systems that are not even operating, middle schools and high schools anymore for the rest of the year because of things. So this is not an easy time to address things because we don't have people knocking down our doors to even interview when you have a northeast Wisconsin-wide agency that serves well over forty schools, and you have seven people that apply for that position? That should tell us a lot.
We thought of reposting, but we, why? We, you know, anything to do with...
It's the state of education. So that permeates down to all the school districts. Obviously, you know, we all say it, but everybody's struggling with the same things. But at the end of the day, if you don't have people to do this, which I believe I said probably a thousand times from June till now, if you don't have the people to do it, what are we going to do? Human capital is the most important thing that we possibly have. And are we fostering it or the opposite? And we have to think about the future of our educational system. We, for a long time, had seven positions posted, and we had zero applicants. Zero. The only applicant we did get was a current teacher. So.
Fill one slot and empty another.
Correct? It's not easy. So again, if the community has great ideas, I would sure love to talk to you about it because I'm trying to be transparent with everybody, but it's really difficult to offer all these things that people want offered. And we have nobody to do it.
How did you contact the public about the S R funds? How did you do that?
Through our communication, like, it's a link, everything to everybody. So I can do it again.
It's on Facebook, it's on the communication, or School Messenger.
I'm not on Facebook, so I...
It's in School Messenger, so you should have got it in an email.
Yeah, and then add a link to the twenty-six pages, too, so that you'd be able to...
You scared them off before they got to change this.
Well, that's what I have to deal with. I have to deal with it, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm just wondering, maybe if a different approach wouldn't be better?
Well, there'll be, I mean, there's definitely going to be a follow-up of that.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we know people watch anything that comes out through their emails or communication that do have input. And it was very disheartening to see that they do have ideas, we want to hear them, and then we didn't get very many responses, so.
I found out through my years working at the bank that some people, they're not, they don't volunteer. But if you ask them, well, you know, they turn out to be the best people ever. They're not that type of person to say, yeah, I think I'll do this. Here, clearly, so.
Well, and I think, you know, that we probably do want to try and have just a community forum at some point and get ideas. But what people will have to understand is that anything that we discuss will then have to be determinative if it's into the qualifications, you know?
Yeah.
Not that everybody has to be able to understand the twenty-six pages. But as you had explained previously, the money is allocated, but we have to spend it and then get reimbursed. But if we spend it, and they decide that we spent it on the wrong things, then we won't get reimbursed. And obviously, we do not want to, we're too small of a district to try and fall into trap of spending money expecting to get it and not get it. But, so, yeah, a lot more work has to be done. I think those funds are good till twenty twenty-four.
I believe so.
But we have to have a plan submitted by March fifteenth.
Of this year? Okay.
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
So this was just phase one of, like, trying to get community input. There's got to be other phases.
So after holidays, have calm down.
Yes. Twenty-six pages to, I mean, I don't know, we might have to have some support in being able to read that and understand that.
Yeah. Well, I think also this time of year, to be quite honest, everybody's thinking of holidays. And after we get through the holidays, we can maybe start buckling down onto some of the more, those kinds of details. So we'll have to stay tuned on that. Anything else?
No, that and all the good news.
Yeah, she gave up, took all your thunder.
Just let me have it once.
Elementary principals report. Lady.
All right. I will start off with a couple of highlights and bright spots from December at AES. Just kind of some miscellaneous items that I just wanted to highlight. First, we did fill our Title One Reading and Math Teacher slash Instructional Coach position at the elementary school. Danielle Schultz is going to be taking that position. We currently have a first-grade teacher position posted. So obviously, Danielle won't be moving into her new role until we have a good candidate that will be taking over. But I'm really excited to have her in that role. She has just a knack for working with children and understanding that every student is different and just using multiple ways to reach students and connect them to their learning and kind of some things that matter. So I'm very excited for that. So more information on that transition as we're able to make that happen. Another bright spot is that we, at the elementary school, are now offering chef salad as an option in addition to the hot lunch item that is being served daily. Currently, we are just offering that for fifth and sixth graders. We just wanted to start with that group first, just to kind of fine-tune our process a little bit and kind of figure out how desirable of a thing that would be for elementary students. And we're seeing a lot of really good success with that.
Oh, good.
Anywhere from nine to thirty-nine students a day are taking chef salad as an option, so.
Nice. Can I add that all of the lettuce, so far the lettuce, we talked about that.
Yes, all of the lettuce, or I should say, the majority of the lettuce is provided through Penny that she's growing. And the fifth and sixth graders love it. They refer to it as the good lettuce. They ask for it when it's not there. They eat it up first. And they're always disappointed, and we have to supplement with iceberg lettuce, which is also a good option, but not, not the good lettuce. We definitely have had some bumps in the road, just some growing pains with, you know, how to balance offering both options. Lindsay Harmon has been working with the fifth and sixth grade students, the teachers, the kitchen staff. She's down there every day, just making it, helping to make it run smoothly. We've met a couple of times. We are hoping, well, I shouldn't say we're hoping, we are going to be expanding it to third and fourth graders coming up at the end, at the new semester, at the start of the new semester. So Linda Lebat has offered to kind of be our contact person for those two grade levels. So we're going to be meeting after break. We'll share what we've learned so far, and then Linda can help us scale that to third and fourth graders as well, so. We've had a lot of positive feedback on that, for sure, from students, from parents. Staff also have that option as well. We've got, we've got a lot of really great ideas to make it even better, so stay tuned. We, with it being the week before Christmas, we have been having a lot of dress-up days and fun activities as well. Today was also pajama day at the elementary school. The teachers had a cookie exchange after school today as well. In addition to that, Maria and I have been trying to spread a little holiday cheer at the elementary school as well. We put together twelve days before winter break. So each day, there's a different game or activity for the staff to participate in.
And daily rhyme.
And a daily rhyme. So it's been, it's been a lot of fun, just something a little different, something, something much needed, I think. Just a little fun and a little joy. If we can spread it, we're happy to do so. A huge thank you to Chris, Chris Aries, I think I'm saying that right. He made a donation to our classrooms, kindergarten through fourth grade. He provided them with thirty dollars each for each grade level. He just wanted to make sure that the teachers got a little bit, something extra to put towards the students and their learning. So huge thank you to him. I know the teachers will greatly appreciate that. And then the final bright spot is we have a group of sixth graders who are planning a fifth and sixth grade dance coming up in January, right after we get back from break. They came to me with the idea, and I gave them my blessing. And they've been working very hard to prepare this. They've got the teachers volunteering. Mr. Vander West is going to be providing the music. They have a sign-up genius for parents, so that parents can bring food and snacks. And they're also going to be charging, I think it's two dollars, but that money is going to go to a local charity. So they're very excited about it, and I'm very excited about it as well.
As a parent perspective, it's been real fun to hear the details coming out, so.
It's all them. They had a slideshow presentation for me and why they thought they should have a dance. They want to dress up, but you don't have to dress up, you can if you want to, so. They've really thought of everything. So that's coming up on January, Friday, January seventh, and it'll be held at the elementary school.
Safety of students, like, should we think about them from in the hallways?
Lock all the...
Yeah.
They've got some good ideas, so it's definitely a bright spot. I wanted to share some information to wrap up the Holiday Helpers program. And I'm going to read what Jamie Robinson sent to me, just kind of summarizing their success this year. She writes, "The Holiday Helpers had a very successful program this year. Each year, the program searches for families that are experiencing financial difficulties. The families are asked to share gift ideas that their children are hoping for this holiday. Our Holiday Helpers, who are fifth and sixth grade peer leaders, organize a donation tree at Denny's Super Value where the community can buy gifts to fulfill the wishes hung on the tree. We took in eighty-four gifts from the tree this year. The helpers also raised money through a stocking fundraiser at the elementary school. And in addition, Ms. Vander Mus and her 4K students did a candy cane fundraiser for us this year. Plus, this year, the high school held a door decorating contest with the winner being Mrs. Lumberger. And all money raised was donated to our program. These three events, along with staff and community member donations, raised one thousand eight hundred twelve dollars and twenty-six cents to buy clothing, toys, and books for twenty-eight families, including one family who recently lost everything in a house fire. It was a great year of everyone working together to help our families. So huge thank you to everyone who contributed to making that a success." I did also want to share that the candy cane, Candy Cane Graham fundraiser that the 4K students did in collaboration with Mrs. Robinson, raised four hundred and ninety-five dollars. So candy canes were one dollar each. So it was four hundred and ninety-five candy canes that we had to find. But we did it. And we did have an anonymous donation from a grandmother, who, I don't know who this person is, but she wanted to make sure that every student received a candy cane. So after they tabulated everything, divvied them out, sorted them, they then wrote out messages for the, any other student who didn't have a candy cane. So every single student had at least one, if not more, candy canes delivered to their classroom last night. So it was definitely a success and spread some cheer. And then lastly, just to highlight the four K through fourth grade holiday concert that is coming up on Thursday this week, the twenty-third. Ten o'clock AM is four K in kindergarten. First and second grade is at one o'clock. Third and fourth grade is at one forty-five. Parents are welcome to attend. The PTS will be running a bake sale before and after all three of those shows with funds that are generated going back towards the PTS to put towards school efforts for the students and for the teachers. So all are welcome to attend. That's all I have.
A lot of fun things happening at your school.
I was just gonna say, I was in school last week, I had assigned something and Penny Lumberger caught me. And we hadn't been back there by the hydro ponds for quite a while. But she's expanded it now. I mean, she's got quite an operation going on back there. If you get a chance, stop in and take a look at it.
Well, and it's the students too.
Well, yes, yes.
I mean, we always say Penny, but it's a, it's a effort, a team effort. That's exciting though.
It was really.
I knew that there were more installed, but that's gotta feel like almost a greenhouse now.
Well, she, they came into, kind of into the tech area somewhat because the, you know, the room that we was that big. So it's quite a quite a lettuce operation she's got there. Let us farm people.
It's a project of charter schools. So that's why it's in that space. So they have students that are, that's, you know, their project.
Excellent. Yeah. Any other questions for Katie? Okay. Middle school, high school principals report and Pathfinder update. Katie Morin.
All right, I will start. Julie already talked about the glue drive. So I'm just gonna open up and go with the door decorating contest. So our teachers use their first power students to decorate their doors to raise money for Holiday Helpers. So if you have locked the hallway, some of them got pretty creative with their doors. And then the students were able to donate money and vote to which door they thought was the best door. And they raised just a little over a hundred and fifty dollars to give to the Holiday Helpers program, which I thought was pretty awesome. Things are starting to move along with the high school library. So Katie starts the library and has gotten all the books out of the study rooms. And I started planning the furniture that she would like to order. And she really is great with being students that are didn't mind it. The idea she had were little chairs and tables so that they are movable and they could make the library into kind of the classroom that they want it to be. She's gonna have some whiteboard tables that turn into whiteboards that teachers would use. We have a lot of kids who are into graphic novels. So she's got some pretty cool bench seating with shelves behind it to store some of our graphic novel books. She's got some plans for the study rooms. So she's gonna make the study rooms as they are, except she's gonna make one also into a maker's space where she's going to put the podcast equipment. So yeah, she's just got some really cool ideas. She's just starting to lay everything out. And then she's then meeting with some teachers and students in regards to what they want their vision of the library to be as well. Lakeshore Singers, so Dave Robertson is starting the community choir up again. It will start on January second at four o'clock and it will be every Sunday at four o'clock. It's been quite a few years since we've had that. So Dave's excited to get that going again. I was in it last time and it was always a blast. And then the last thing is the new, one of our new high school class offerings. So Mr. Nelson will be offering an outdoor living class second semester. And some of the topics that he's covering are chainsaw use, wood splitting, snowshoeing, ice fishing, how to properly feed a storefish, wire tying, cooking over an open fire, different fire making skills, tree pruning, they're gonna make syrup, hiking and tending. And then every other week, they're gonna have a wild game, you know, like he's gonna be cook air. He's like, I guess the students help up. So he's gonna have duck and goose, rabbit, turkey, all different kinds of fish that he's taught. So it sounds like a really awesome class for our kids to get some outdoor life skills. And then it's kind of, it's not necessarily a prerequisite to be in leadership through high adventure, but the kids who are going on the trip who really like to take that just so they have some sort of experience with the makeup. So we're really excited to offer that as the first time in the spring semester. That's all I have.
Questions?
Yeah, Nelson, I got two straight thoughts. We put this thing out.
Oh, no.
Think you might have some raccoons over there.
Okay. Special ed report, Marie.
Sure. We have the Ride for Kids program starting up in January again. If you recall, that is the program run by Door County Medical. And it partners high school volunteers with our students with disabilities and provides them with some recreational opportunities. It's a lot of fun for both the, both parties involved to build those relationships and just a fun opportunity.
What's the name of that program again?
Ride for Kids, like the number four.
This year, Adam Peranto, he did, no longer works for Door County Medical Center, but is still going to run the program. And then Savannah Dahl from EVA will be leading that up as a project manager. She's in our Turner Pathway. But one other addition that I think this came out today, Marie, I don't even know that you know this, but they're gonna work with East Shore Industry Clients. And they will also be mentors with high school students. So it'll be like a tripod. So it'll be East Shore Industry Clients with a high school mentor and one of our youth from our district. And they go around to like, what, twenty different stations or something like that.
Very cool. You may have remembered that last month, I kept, our, almost every meeting, I kept bringing up the occupational therapist update. We do have a new occupational therapist on board, Maggie Graff. She is right out of schooling. So she's very new to occupational therapy. So our previous occupational therapist, Hannah, her land is kind of helping her along the way as a mentor. So it's a great opportunity for them to learn from one another, but then also provide our students with what they need. We have a paraprofessional opening again. Previously, we had removed the paraprofessional posting because we were able to grow within. And one of our paraprofessionals was able to become a special education teacher through a license with stipulations, which is an avenue that we're trying to explore a little bit more to grow within and how we can help build the capacity of those interested in working with disabilities. However, a barrier is the need for a bachelor's degree and how we can provide opportunities for those individuals to maybe have the on-the-job training while still seeking out that opportunity. So we've been in, in contact with UW Madison for a graduate program. However, like I said, the barrier of not having the bachelor's degree is an obstacle that we're trying to work through right now. But obviously, special education is a very high demand, as with all teaching positions right now. But how we can be creative in seeking out personnel that way. That's really all that I have for now.
Well, at least the OT position is something you don't have to be talking about.
Check.
Mark that up. Yeah, we have to celebrate the, the good things. Any other questions? Okay. Live AlGoma Monthly Update.
So today, or today in this meeting and then next month as well, and possibly February, we have some grants that are wrapping up, or we just wanna give our year-end reports. And so I'm gonna do less talking and have the floor for the people who are directly involved. So I invited Amanda Barrigan here today to talk about what she's been involved in the last two years as a community youth advocate in our grant that you kind of heard me talk about a little bit in the state spotlighting. So I'm just gonna pass the torch to Amanda because she's the one that's doing some really great stuff. So.
All right. Well, as Teal said, my name's Amanda Barrigan and I'm the Community Youth Advocate, serving the Oklahoma School District. In twenty twenty, the Oklahoma School District, in partnership with Kiwanee County, received an innovation grant that the state of Wisconsin to build a program that connects youth to what they need to be successful in and beyond the classroom, to increase school attendance and to eliminate truancy referrals, to ensure youth have opportunity and connections to be successful post-graduation. We had a lot of success in year one. And as a result, the state granted us another year of funding to continue. Within the first year, we realized that in order for youth to become successful in the classroom, we needed to think beyond the classroom. So therefore, we built a program based on vital conditions of health. And each youth, youth that I work with has a goal based off of one of those conditions. And the vital conditions include basic needs and health, health for safety, lifetime learning, meaningful work and wealth, humane housing, reliable transportation, and belonging and civic muscle. We have provided, with the success of this program, that when vital conditions are being met and their goals are being achieved, that youth are able to engage in more in their education and the wellbeing, which leads to less absences and fewer truancy referrals. In addition to focusing on the goals of the vital conditions of health, we built a Connecting the Dots Initiative. So the goal for the Connect the Dots is to have the youth work that I work with be able to identify five people outside of their family and friends to add to their support system. So they could be mentors, people they could count on from a time of need, guidance, or direction. To date, I have worked with thirty-one different youth and in the last two years, and currently working with eleven. Some of the youth have either left the district, graduated, or currently just don't feel they need that extra support at this time. In two years, the program has become successful, that the state has recognized us in the Connecting of the Dots Initiative and creating goals for youth based on their vital conditions and health. And they would like to use the frameworks that we've developed to spread and scale to others in the state of Wisconsin. So I enjoy being able to help youth continue to strive, reach their goals, build relationships within the community, and to connect them to be successful now and in their future.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Obviously, you were involved and a big part of the success of that program. And the state has even recognized it. And so. Wonderful. Excellent.
They also spotlighted the Community Resource Center, Mobile Resource Center, as that was something that we had utilized with our grant funds as well. Worked with our community partners and that was just a, kind of a dream that came out of COVID. We had a lot of students that were isolated and we're still able to use the Mobile Resource Center in many different ways. Our library is gonna be like, what do you call it, the magic swiss, the frizzle, the magic school bus where like kids have field trips. She'll take Mobile Resource Center there. It's decked out with technology. So it's multipurpose, but Amanda also uses it as a, as a mobile center for resources for families in need. So just that she's been recognized all over in the state of Wisconsin and they wanna grow some of the programs that she built here in Oklahoma. So it's pretty great.
How long does that grant go for, the funding of it?
It's finished.
It's finished.
It's finishing. So are they thinking about?
I'd love to have a conversation with you about that later.
I bet you would. Well, I, you know, I didn't, I didn't hear anything about, are they, you know, they love it so much, are they gonna continue to fund it?
Yeah, we don't wanna definitely let that go. So we have, you know, some ideas of what we can do to keep continuing that in the future. But I would just say, the youth, it's, it's great. I mean, Amanda doesn't, she's an employee of the school district. So she works to tie together lots of different systems and supports, like it's like a, kind of like a school social worker in some sense, if I could wrap it in a identity. But it's been very helpful to have her because families trust her, you know? She's not a school district employee. Not that they don't trust schools employees, but she's an advocate. She knows she's a parent in the community and that's been very helpful.
Well, and we sort of alluded to that type of position in our resolution.
Yeah.
Can, you know, can, can school districts hire and build for people like that? And we have proof, recognized by the state that it's effective with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we, the students that don't need the support anymore, maybe their goal was transportation. We can easily say, well, they should be transported by school, but if they have other reasons why they're not in a jurisdiction or whatever the case may be, that might be a goal for them, just to get to school. So how do we utilize, you know, the community youth advocate to help us with that or basic needs, working with that, whether it's food access or healthcare access, or you name it. It's been really helpful to have that connecting person.
Look forward to that discussion.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
Next month, we'll be Penny Lumberger with the Now Garden Grant, and she'll explain how that expansion has been going. We were funded through our famous funders who believe in what we're doing with the hydroponic units. And then she'll talk about what she's doing with Venture Academy and how they're growing that into a business. They just named their Director of Communication, who is Vicki Lu. So, yes, I'm super excited about that. So maybe we can encourage Vicki to come as well. But so that will be January.
All right. Look forward to that. So that's a good segue right into AlGoma Venture Academy update.
So I'm gonna give a quick update just from me. And then I have a student representative here. And I know that maybe her mother will speak a little bit too. But I wanted to, we just, Nick had just sent in an authorizer report. So we have to send in just kind of where we're at mid-year. And we were pulling together some data. The state did recognize our growth so far in math. So if you remember me talking, we gave the school year, all of our students, we have twenty-one out of the twenty-three right now who took math assessment and they were below grade level, which is not surprising due to the COVID and all the other stuff that we had. But in four or less months, these students are at grade level. And thirty-three percent are proficient and we're pushing forty-five percent who are mastered and actually completing math courses. So if they're enrolled in Algebra II, they're almost done with Algebra II by first semester, which is, this would be a year-long course. So we, it's a, the purpose of a public charter school is to innovate and to inform the legacy school about some best practices. So it's not to say we don't need math teachers, but it is to say that our students overall are really benefiting from this individualized math curriculum online. And then we have support systems on the side that help them when they are struggling with certain math concepts. So it's a facilitation mode of an expert math person. And I think it's something that our district really needs to lean into and learn from because the state of Wisconsin is already recognizing the success of our students thus far just taking this online course. And so what it does, they have a knowledge check in the beginning. They go through about twenty topics a week. Is that right, Sylvia? And then they do a knowledge check at the end. And the only way they can pass that, those topics is if they can prove that they know the content. And we're just seeing some really great growth. And they can go at their own pace. So if they're struggling with something, they can continue to learn. If they're mastering, they can go ahead. They don't have to wait for the rest of the class. So it's a, it's just something that I think we need to keep focused on and learning from. Again, not to make a threat to anybody. It's not a threat to legacy school or the math teachers. It means that, hey, maybe we could use our math teachers as facilitators. So definitely something to just learn from. And I brought Sylvia here, asked her to come. She really loves me for asking her to come. This is her thing. But something that I think is really important, because we're the first public charter school in Kiwanee and Door County, and half of the battle is educating people on what a part, public charter school does and what the importance of it. And every charter school has a different pathway. So we're project-based, community-based learning. And Sylvia has just hit it out of the ballpark and is just a huge role model of what we're trying to do in Venture Academy. So I asked her to come here today to just tell you about one of her projects, from the inception of the idea to how it all combines interdisciplinary and how she aligns it to the learning targets. And I think it's just important for her to model that so that we understand what we're after in Venture Academy and why it's a little bit different.
And Sylvia, can we have your full name?
I'm Sylvia Toby and I am.
You can stand up if you want.
And I am an eighth grade student at AlGoma Venture Academy. And I did a project on the Chinese Mid-Autumn Festival. And the reason I found out about this whole festival was because I was on TikTok and I found a video of a mooncake. And I was like, I really wanted to try it. And so I wanted to. And so I wanted to know more about the process of how it was made. And then with that, I found out that there was a whole festival to go with that. And so I started branching out from there, and so I started doing research on the festival. And so after I started doing research on the festival, I started learning about what's traditionally harvested at the festival because the Chinese Mid-Autumn Festival is used as like a harvest festival as it's in the middle of fall. And so I did nutrition targets based off of what they harvested and what they ate and stuff. And then after that, I branched out and I learned about what's traditionally worn and how those clothing, how that clothing is made, and how those types of clothes are manufactured, and like how those items are priced and so on. To get like a deeper understanding of like how the festival originated, I did research on traditional poems so I could get like a perspective of what the people thought of when the festival first began. And so I did a whole bunch of research on that. And so then I had all of this information, and I had to tie it together throughout that. And with that, I completed two language targets through the poems. I completed two writing targets, two art targets, two people and cultures targets, and one nutrition target. And this project was over 20 pages long, and it only took me less than 72 hours to complete. It only took me that long because I was very passionate about what I was doing, and I really wanted to learn about it. And I think it's important that people do what they need to do in order to learn. And so this pathway has been very helpful for me to do that.
So by learning target, what she's referring to is Wisconsin State standards. So we take all the Wisconsin State standards that all of our legacy students have to have by the time they graduate. But the difference is that the students have to navigate that. So they have dropdown boxes in content, so whether it's science, social studies, electives. And they have to pull the Wisconsin State standards, we say, learning targets into their projects, and they have to be able to prove them at proficiency or mastered in order to get credit towards those. So she, when she says 72 hours, it was 72 hours. And I know insight from her mom, which I would love a parent perspective, but she was told that she had to stop working on this at home because she would take this home because she was just, one thing led to another, led to another. But the interdisciplinary, so not only did she gain different core concepts, but she also gained elective credits. So she's, you know, it's all of these types of things that they're learning in these different classes on a project that took her into many different pathways. So that's a little insight into what Venture Academy is all about.
And to be excited about what you're learning, to the point that you have to say.
Yeah, stop doing your homework. So as a parent perspective, I'd love, and I know you said, try not to be emotional.
I get super emotional about it. So I'll try not, well, you probably do too. It's a game changer. Oh, see? They got again. Sylvia has not liked school forever. Sorry. I totally thought I could hold it. She has not liked school forever. So it's always a chore. Like, you gotta go to school. Oh, I think I might be sick. Like that thing. So COVID hit, which was a blessing for Sylvia because she had to stay home. And she, she wasn't coming back. She wasn't coming back. So she is a researcher kid, and she proposed all of the research to us, why she should be homeschooled, what program she was going to take, how she was going to do it. She had it laid out. It was a PowerPoint presentation. She was not coming. And then we had heard about it from one of Sylvia's friends' parents. And I said, well, let's just go check it out. Well, I don't know. I don't think it's going to be for me. So we went to check it out, and we talked to Abigail and Teal. We left there, and she said, that's exactly where I need to be. And has not missed a day of school since. Never complains about it. She's always finding something from, like, for example, the windmill cookies that she finds at the Wiggly Wiggly. She now loves them. So it goes from eating the windmill cookie to, I wonder how they make these, to, I wonder where they originate, to, I wonder what other cultures have, I wonder what points I can get for this if I could figure out how to bake these cookies, how to incorporate some culture to it, how to maybe sew an outfit, how to, you know, write this report. And that's how her brain is constantly working. So it doesn't matter what it is. She's like, I wonder. And it's been a huge, huge, huge blessing. Huge blessing.
I'm going to embarrass her.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Something else I've noticed, and I can't downplay this, but I think when we think of education, we think academics. It's just something that I think generationally we think of at first. And yes, I'm very proud of Sylvia in her academic role, and I'm more proud of the way that I've seen Sylvia grow in the way that she presents herself in front of others. So in the summer when we met, she was head down, no eye contact, her shoulders were slouched, all of the physical attributes. And now she is like confident. She yells at me sometimes during the day, puts me into my spot, comes to my office. I mean, it's good. It's like good to see her like getting out there and having the claw. And that's, we can't downplay those things either. Time management, organization, creating their own schedule. Those are all things that we hope that they can do post-graduation, so they can handle whatever it is, whatever pathway they choose. So she was just, I wanted that both of them to come in as just a parent perspective and a student perspective of what AB is all about. So.
We really appreciate that, both of you.
Yeah, good time.
Algoma was lucky to have it.
And we're proud of you.
Yes. Thank you so much for.
Because I, I'm old school. I had no idea how that worked until now. You know, I had just no concept of it. So, yeah, thank you so much for sharing.
And becoming a role model, I'm sure.
She's only in eighth grade.
Yeah, she's only in eighth grade, so look out, world. Look out, world.
Well, that's it. You can, you know. That's exciting. We are going to watch you fly as the youths go on. We're excited.
I think the other thing that I want to point out is like, you know, how they acquire those credits. It's, that's traditionally been a teacher's job. Now you have students taking responsibility for identifying what they need to learn, then actually doing that and being accountable for it on a whole different, right? I want to give a sign back. I think that, that to me is the game changer, is that in a traditional setting sometimes, that is just a sit and get, and the students are not taking accountability for their own learning. I think Sylvia and others, there are lots of eighth graders in the charter pathway. It's an interesting group to watch. They are the largest group in the charter pathway. I think they're doing some really unique things. Hence why I said, you know, they're only in eighth grade. So I think they're learning this pathway and how to do it. And, yeah, I see lots of kids down there, but it just really illustrates that when you think differently about education.
I think one of the things, sorry to interrupt, one of the things I think is impressive too is the individual growth where kids who didn't belong, couldn't find their niche, can be in there, and it's a safe space. And because of what interests them, that helps them grow, that helps them grow, that helps them grow individually for who they are. Whereas before, they weren't, not so much not allowed, it was just like, oh, you know? And I think it's been huge. I mean, I don't know all these kids, but just seeing, you know, seeing them. I coach DI, so I know some of the kids. And just seeing where they have found their tribe, I think is fabulous.
When we ask students, like, what do you want to be when you grow up? And we have those like statements, right, those questions. Something very interesting that I think we can learn from as well is the way that they're selecting learning targets specifically related to elective credits. So Abby and I have been really focused on each of their, they have a program called Headrush, so you can go on and see what they're taking. And without them noticing, they're gravitating towards things that they're interested in at first. And over time, in four months, we're seeing certain electives that they're filling, like whether it's people and cultures, or technology, or whatever. And that's a high indicator of what they're passionate about and what their skill set is, which can help inform their next pathway forward. Without us saying, what do you want to be when you grow up? They're just naturally selecting these learning targets at first. So that's something that we didn't even anticipate going down this pathway, that we were finding out. And I don't need to keep you a buck here.
Thank you.
Sylvia, I think you could do another project on Sun Drop. Field trips out there.
Yeah, it's a pretty cool place, too.
What about the Belgian permis? That's what I'm thinking. That's locally. Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph.
Moving on to committee reports. Anne, Public Relations Marketing Committee, it's not going to be nearly as interesting.
No, it's not. You know, I said, I was very frustrated that our new website isn't up there, but they're working on it. And it's exciting because there are certain parts of that where the language can be changed, pictures can be changed, all that information can be changed. And, you know, what we've seen on our old one is things weren't changed. And Teal tells me that January is end of the first phase. And then I said, I'm so frustrated with this. I want to see it done. But they're working on it.
It's a big project.
Oh, it is.
And requires a lot of input from a lot of different people who are all very busy.
There's like the static stuff that will be done. But then what happens when you redesign a website is it opens up a whole can of worms of your internal process of communication. So that's kind of a phase two. That's a discussion that we're going to have to iron out, and that's going to take some time. So who's going to manage some of those updates, the one and done things that go on and come off? And then how do you inform each other? So what are those lines of process with communication, but all good conversations? But yes, Anne was like, I'm frustrated.
And Jesse came in and talked to us too on how to make things a little more efficient. So go forward.
Registration. Yeah, excellent.
So I was interrupted. Not as interesting as Sylvia's.
Yeah. Sounds good. Okay, current COVID statistics. How are we doing in the schools?
So lucky sevens or lucky threes, so three at the elementary, three at the high school, three staff. For a long time, you were zero, one, zero. So we've seen a little bit of a tick, but I think we've got a handle on those pretty quickly. So.
All right. Any questions or comments? Okay, we'll move to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of November 15th, 2021, and the Public Relations Marketing Committee minutes of December 15th, 2021.
I so move.
Motion made by Joanne. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Anne. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that were in your packet as well as those presented to us tonight.
So move.
Motion made by Pat. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second and by Anne. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve a purchase of a black service van not to exceed $36,500.
I agree, too.
Okay, motion made by Dave.
I will make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
And second and by Pat. Questions or discussion on that?
And just to confirm, it would be identical to the one we already have. So we have one of those former Pontiac vans.
Wow. Wow, there.
One of the former Pontiac vans that we used to have is really limited to just Algoma. It's on its last leg, so it's time to re.
So this is replacement, basically?
Correct. It's not an addition. It's a replacement of, much like we do with the buses, right? So every year, we plan to get a new one in place so that everything is updated to the best of our ability.
Is there one available for potential?
There is. So on the fleet side of things, it's roughly two and a half to three months. If it was personal, yeah, forget it. There are people still waiting for vehicles they ordered in March, from what I've been told, so. But the fleet side apparently has pretty good inventory. And it's not like we're getting a van that's got all these amenities on it. It's very basic. I'm trying to talk loudly for my friend. So it's identical to the one we already have.
So we're buying new. We're not going to buy, we're buying new.
Correct. The benefit of that is obviously we get a major discount from the government. So much like a lot of our outdoor equipment, we just get a huge break on it. So it doesn't even make sense to go down that kind of used road.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve $300 donation from friends for Thanksgiving for Wolf Den.
I so move.
Motion made by Joanne.
I'll second.
Second and by Anne. Questions or discussion on that, other than a thank you? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need any motion, if there is, for recommended modifications? Hearing none. We'll move on. Request for future agenda items. I'm wondering if we, if it is something that we want to discuss. Other districts have recognized the burnout factor and the long stretch with no vacation days and things coming up. Utilizing some snow days maybe for mental health break for people.
I think it's a conversation you can have probably in January because people aren't going to be in tune to that until we get into February and then March and then most of the way through April.
It's a late, it's a late spring break this year, so.
Very late.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe have that on our next agenda for, start some discussion on that. Anything else that anyone can think of? All right, then I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin Statute 19.85, subsection 1 CE FNI for the purpose of personnel matters, hires, staffing resignations, administrator evaluation, and board evaluation.
So move.
I'll second.
Second and by Joanne. Roll call vote. Dave?
Here.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Anne? Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And I also say yes.